Let's call this meeting to order of the Leominster School Committee for Monday, October 18th. And this is our regular meeting. If everyone can stand and say pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. Prior to opening up our public forum, I do need to know if anybody in the audience is recording this meeting. Please identify yourself now. Having no one come forward, we will open up our open forum. If you can please come up to the table and hopefully they can hear from that microphone. Okay, they're saying yes, so please state your name and address for the record, please. Would anybody from the audience like to address the committee? Please come forward now. And one last and final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Having no one coming forward, we're going to close that portion. And I do believe we have a student representative today. And if you can please come forward, and we'd love to hear your report. We've got a bunch, awesome.
Ready? Yeah? You ready? All right, I'd like to introduce Yanina Camberro. Yanina is a junior in the graphics department, and she's going to give you our update.
Perfect. Welcome. I'm here to talk about what's happening at LHS CTI in October of 2021.
Can we, can we give you a microphone? Just so it comes through the PA.
I'm here to talk about what's happening at LHS CTI in October of 2021. First, we have the art club, which is the highest membership in the year, is working on murals all around the building and to impact the school spirit and positive culture. Blue and white doors and windows. In our school bathrooms, we have beautiful murals on our doors and inspiring quotes and positive and classroom murals for teachers and positive messages all throughout our school. For the sewing club, they're working really hard for hand sewing, machine sewing, crocheting, and making clothing items. They're a lovely group. For the chorus, they sang the national anthem at homecoming on October 9th and ran a successful show choir in-school field trip and sign-ups that also increased to 24 members. Rehearsal, which started October 25th. Choir is also preparing for the fall concert on Thursday, November 4th at LHS, starting at 7:00 PM. Our band has just completed the regional MICCA competition, scoring the highest in their division. Membership is still low, causing concern for the futures of programs and directly impacted by the lack of curriculum-based program at the middle school, not just the club. They are continuing a prep for the MICCA finals and the annual Thanksgiving game, Thanksgiving Day game. Our theater company just completed interclass plays with great success and lots of fun had by all. They are now preparing an all-school play titled Puffs, November 19th and 20th at 7:00 PM. When it comes to our athletics, some very successful teams in this fall, the following teams are currently head to a playoff. Our girls soccer's finished second place in the leagues. Field hockey's finished second place in the league. Our boys soccer ranked third in the state and finished first in the leagues. And which was more recent news to us, gold finished second place in the league and just won a Western Mass Section championship this afternoon. And we are having currently installations of six new glass braskets in the wooden gym and are currently awaiting their installations at new wall pads. For CTI, we have new, we have a new assistant principal at CTI, Mr. Chris Kine. Chris is doing an awesome job, and we've also hired five new shop instructors. We need two more instructors, though, health assisting and electronics. So if you know anyone interested to be a vocational teacher.
My whole superintendent.
It's health assisting and electronics. For culinary arts, the annual knockoff advisory board meeting will begin on Wednesday, October 27th of 2021 at 6:00 PM. In the caf, in here in the cafeteria. Chef Emily McLaughlin, McLaughlin, I'm sorry. And Donna Lafayette and Derek Brooks will be hosting a buffet dinner instead of the traditional horse divorce before. Each stop departs to their rece, ah, my bad. Receptive stops for individual programs advisory meetings. They are also catering Jeff Robert's mass higher, mass higher ribbon cutting ceremony at their grand opening this Thursday at 11:00 AM. For our, for our electronics team, we are almost finished with an extensive two-year lighting replacements project here on our schools. Juniors and seniors, under the guidance of Mr. Robert Needham and Daniel Brew, have been replacing over, almost every light fixture in the high school campus with LED lights. The estimated annual yearly savings for the district of Lightningville estimated by the light company is 55,000 per year. And our carpentry team, they just refinished, they're refining, ah, my bad. They're re, they're refinishing the gymnasium doors at the graphic shop. We could wrap them with new artwork. They also took down a building back to school and salvaged most of the materials rather than hiding a company to the demo of the building. Our auto collision repairs restoring our 2006 Chevy Dwali flatbed float truck for the maintenance department. The truck was going to be crushed, but Mr. Tucker and Mr. Sophie, Sophie. I don't know. They have their students replacing a rotten transmission pan and are restoring the frame and body panels. When finished, the float truck can, can again be used to maintain the building and ground of the high school. For our HVAC and our HVAC team, we'll be helping with the maintenance of the rooftop ventilation system by changing the filters and provide and performing the preventative maintenance on the systems. Our machine technology class, Mr. Mc, Mr. McNamara has landed in agreement with the, with the J, J Bill company in Devon. A J Bill is looking for trade students in several trades and after tutoring, after touring CTI this morning, they are setting up meetings with our students to bring them aboard as co-op students. Our plumbing, this shop continues to help with the plumbing needs of this entire campus. They seem to be endless plumbing projects for the shop and these students to work with, work on, which gives them a real work experience. As some know, we are now getting new water filters in our school, now in the CTI hallway and two others throughout the school. And in graphics, which is the shop that I am, and I do screen printing. This shop is very busy printing new shops and search for vocational programs and doing printing for all the schools and central office upon request. We've already begun working on this year's yearbook, and our sort of departing seniors will have a yearbook when they graduate. This will be the third year that our graphics program has created an LHS and CTE yearbook, which I love. This, this year's theme will be storybook, which we'll be really looking forward to. And some additional information is our shop is, we're all very, all working hard in our shop. I do, I do screen printing with all that have projects. A lot of our team is working on our class shirts, and that goes into the final and to all the embroidery and all that stuff. And the rest of the kids are working in Photoshop and in design. A very moving around shop. And that'll be all, that'll be all, thank you.
We're going to apologize for this and repeat. I don't think Mr. Vashon is in court. Actually, Mr. Lizinsky, Mr. Vashon is in court.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Sasso. I'm a junior here. A little bit about myself, I've had my brothers and I graduating from one test, all college graduates as well. I'm involved with National Honor Society. I'm involved with STUMP. STUMP has actually been really successful. I'm the secretary of STUMP. We have Ms. Murphy in the audience, as well as our president, Samuel Cavallaro. We have over 50 kids in our club. It's running really successfully. We're having a town hall with Mr. Mazzarella. We've had a town hall with Ms. Andrea Freeman, successful voter registration drives, and so much more to be planned. An update on LHS, academically, grades are closing in about three weeks, November 5th. And we cannot believe how quickly this term has gone. MACAC is visiting November 7th through the 10th. Our interclass plays occurred two weeks ago, and we've had a faculty group even onstage. Our clubs are up and running, and we have so many students. And as Yanina mentioned, our club is running well, and all the other clubs are running well. Our marching band competed at the MICCA and scored very high, achieving the highest scores in the group. After the show was done, it was said from the judges in our critique that not to put down, and I felt, sorry, not to put down the other groups, but Leominster really was the first group that grabbed the audience with their energy and commitment to the show. And another judge said, you sounded like a band twice your size and had the energy of a band 10 times your size. Our overall scores were visual four stars, music three stars, percussion three stars, color guard four stars, overall effect four stars, overall score four stars. That is the highest score received out of the six bands competing in our division. This, this season, playoffs have started for our fall sports. Field hockey is playing in Marlborough on Wednesday at 3:30 at Doyle. Girls soccer plays tomorrow at 6:00 PM versus Waukesha. Boys soccer got a bye and will play Saturday, 6:00 PM versus Waukesha. Tuck, Tow Target. Golf competed in Pittsfield today and won the Division Two West Regional Championship. And boys and girls cross country will be playing this week. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
So you are, hi. There's a lot of exciting things going on, so thank you both. We should be very proud of our fellow judges. I have one question for you. As we continue to have this opportunity. It feels amazing, the community is very, the students are so welcoming this year, and the school has been so hard. It has welcomed them such a great, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Nice job.
Thank you. Nice job.
So communications superintendent? There are no communications this evening? Okay, and the superintendent report?
Before we get started, and I do want to thank our two students tonight. They really are the voice for Leominster Public Schools, and every chance that we can put students and staff before you is our goal moving forward. We've had a bit of a struggle in the past week. We lost another employee last week, very shockingly. She was a member of our special education team, longtime employee, and her daughter is a working member of our school system. Her grandchild is in our school system. Her son and her father are deeply passionate about Patty Florio. So I would like to take a moment of silence.
Thank you.
So let's get back to the good stuff. So you see what's happening in our schools. I can't say it any better than our students are saying it. We are thriving, we are moving. The word busy doesn't even accumulate to what has been going on. So I will leave the student piece for them. I think they did a nice job updating us. The big piece I want to talk about this evening is our parent conferences are coming up on November 22nd and 23rd, and we are making ourselves readily available for parents. They can meet with us virtually or in person. We can schedule you out however means works better for your family. We had great success with it virtually last year, but there are those that do still want that human contact and need to be in person. So we're making both of those available. And if for some reason you can't meet on the 22nd or the 23rd, we could schedule an in-person meeting at other times to accommodate. But it is vitally important that you have at least that one face-to-face with your child's teacher or teachers. We are seeing amongst all the great things, you know, emotions are running high, frustration is running high, struggling is running, running high. And without the home and parent and school support of the schools and trying to get these routines established. Remember, we have children in front of us that have been out for almost two years. And so we have kindergarten students that missed a screening. We have first grade students in a screening, transitions, all of those rites of passage that were typically there have not been there. So trying to establish routines has been a little bit more difficult, but if there is a cohesive relationship between home and school, it seems to go a little bit smoother. So don't be afraid to reach out to us. Teachers are contacting parents however they have to. We're very open to whatever works best. We're open, we're around. Call our offices, come meet with us, we're available 24/7. And with that, I know the girls alluded to it, but I wasn't kidding, I'm still trying to celebrate the job opportunities, opportunities in public schools. It's on our website, it's on our Facebook page, I put it out there. We're still in need of many, many employees on every level. So I've met some fantastic people with a great skill set, and I said, have you ever thought about working in the public school system? And they just said they, no, you know, for whatever reason. So if there's someone out there that would like to be a part of Leominster Public Schools, please know that we're available. Go onto our site and see if there's something that sparks your interest. Any point in time, we'd be happy to meet with you and discuss it, just to make sure that our children have everything they need to move forward. Because as you can see, there's a lot of opportunity. I think they spoke to about 22 events, I was tallying, that are happening. And that's not everything, and that's just the high school. So we are a busy public school system, and we'd love to have as many people join us as possible. So thank you.
Great, thank you, superintendent. We're going to move on to presentation and discussions, and the first thing is the AP presentation. AP.
I don't have to introduce these ladies because they're all set and they'll introduce themselves, but these are two of our very valued high school teachers, and they're just going to talk a little bit about the AP experience that we're so proud of here at the high school. You do it first.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Montaloli. I'm the AP Environmental Science teacher. I've been teaching this course since the 2013, 2014 school year. It's challenging and stressful sometimes, the teaching an AP course can be. This is one of the favorite courses that I've been teaching in the 14 years that I've been in this building. The AP program gives students a taste of what it's going to be like when they get into a college-level course. The pacing of the course, the rigorous content of the course, for many of our students, especially our upper-level students, it's the first time that they might be struggling in a class to get an A or a B. It's the first time that they really have to learn how to study and how to manage their time for the amount of work that they're given. And especially these are usually the students that also have a big plate on them, extracurricular wise as well. The course content, it also makes students not only have to know it, but they have to be able to use that content on the test and in real-life situations to propose solutions to problems, justify their opinions. On the exam that I teach, they have to be able to design and experiment and be able to support their design with knowledge that they've used from the course. And many of the students, they go on to pursue a career in the sciences, this is the kind of thing that they're going to have to experience there as well. It's, for some of these students, it's the first time that they have to seek out a teacher for extra help, because they're not used, they're usually the ones aggressive so easily that they don't need the extra help. So for a lot of them, it's that, giving them that experience here at the high school, when they have the support of the teacher, before they're just thrown into a lecture hall with, you know, thousands of kids, and they're just a number or a social security number to the teacher, and they don't really know them or have that, that relationship with them yet. When I started teaching this course, I had gone to a quick one-day workshop that was specifically geared for the environmental science. The workshop itself was okay, but it was there that I had learned about an AP group, a Facebook group for AP teachers for the course for around the country. And it's been a valuable resource for the last seven years that I've been teaching this. I mean, it's like having access to teachers from all over the country that share their resources, help as far as if you have a question, many of them are very experienced at the AP level and can answer questions. It's like almost having like help at your fingertips, and you can also give the help at any time of the day. That summer, the year of 2015, I had gone to an AP Summer Institute in St. John's Berry, where the instructor there was extremely knowledgeable. He took us off course, off of the campus a few times during the week, where they were able to give us the experience and the knowledge that we needed to bring back to the classroom to better support our students. I was supposed to go back the summer of 2020, when they had changed around the course and the exam a little bit, but due to COVID, there wasn't that option to go in person. And virtually, I didn't feel like I was going to get as much out of that experience, because they had us go and do it, a lot of the stuff that were hands-on. I'm hoping that I can possibly get back there again this summer, because I think the, the experience is to bring back to the classroom is invaluable, and the not, like I said, the knowledge and everything that you get from that experience. When I've spoken to former AP students that are now in college, many of them say how it's with the AP courses that really helped to get them through that first semester of college, really helped them to learn how again to manage their time when they were taking, you know, had work classes, and work was just kind of thrown at them, and they have to just go and do it on their own. I think that again, it has helped them to manage their time, figure out, you know, especially if they have like a work-school study where they have to get their coursework done and be able to support themselves as well as, as a job. My last thing I just want to leave you with is I think that maintaining a strong AP program here at the high school is invaluable, not only to our students today, but to future students that will have the opportunity to take these courses as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larissa Murphy. I am a teacher at the high school. I currently teach AP World History and AP United States Government and Politics. I have some alumni in the, in the wings there, if you really want to.
I had both of them.
So I, I just want to sort of echo what Danielle was saying about the importance of the AP program at Leominster High School. I really do think it's one of our biggest assets. And when I speak to former students, alumni, they consistently report that the rigorous curriculum and the accelerated pace of AP classes really does help prepare them very well for college. One of the things I like most about the AP courses is that they are skills-based, meaning that along with content, they are learning important critical thinking skills and practicing more skills that can really extend across different disciplines and different types of curriculum. My, being an AP teacher myself, this is my, ooh, 18th year, I think, teaching AP classes, and it really does require that I constantly change and, and update my practice skills. I attend, I try to attend a week-long professional development during the summer, at least every other year. Since I do teach two different disciplines, I like to, you know, go back and forth to which one I, which one I'm at the seminar for. But those, as Danielle pointed out, those seminars are just invaluable for the information, but also the connections that you, that you make. Also, I've been an AP exam reader for the past 13 years. That means that at the end of June, I go out to Salt Lake City, Utah, with about 2,000, 1,000 other teachers and college professors, and that is where all of the essays that are written for the exams get read and scored. So exam, AP exam graders can be high school teachers, a lot of them are college professors. They're from all over the country, and I think that this week of collaboration with the best teachers in their field is sort of the most incredible professional development I've had, you know, in the AP program at all. They bring in speakers. We get to talk to the test development committee and ask them questions, like literally questions like, why did you put this on the test? And, and you know, things that AP teachers are, want answers to. So that's been really probably one of the most rewarding experiences that I've had as a, as a teacher, not just an AP teacher, but teacher overall. So I know the College Board is very good at putting out propaganda about, you know, the program and everything, but there is one statistic that really has always stayed with me, and that is the fact that the single most determinant factor of whether or not a student is going to finish college in four years is whether or not they took an AP course in high school. Not the exam, not, not passed the class, not took the exam, but actually took an AP course in high school. And I just think that speaks to the kind of rigor and the kind of skill set that AP courses deliver. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just, anybody with any questions? Let's see, do you have a seat?
Yes, please. Thank you. So, I mean, one of the things that appears to be happening in these community colleges in Pittsburgh State University, and our high schools are beginning to merge, but with more partnership intervention. You know, I heard 30 years ago, it's going to be K through 14, K through 16, and that's beginning to happen. How much, I, I know there are students that get college credit while they're still in high school. Are, are those your students as well?
Some of them, yes. It depends on the course, it depends on the score that they get on the, on the exam. But some schools will allow, will give college credit for scores of three or above. It's not necessarily, you know, for the, you know, if they're, if you're going for like a bio degree, they're not going to let you test out of bio, but they might use that, you know, if you had a really good exam score, to possibly use that to settle some of your prerequisite courses that you would need to do.
And I think the feedback that I've heard from parents is, it's, it's like a very hidden, like, oh, no, I don't want people to know about our AP courses, for whatever reasons. And whether that's deliberate, because you can only handle so many students, but most parents are thrilled with the AP courses, and the feedback is definitely how their student, their children do well, and especially in competitive environments, it really helped them. It gave them a little bit of a springboard, a little bit of a, you know, spring ahead competitively. Let's face it, when some of these students are going to some of these schools, it's competitive, and they need to rank well, and they're only taking so many students in areas, but definitely a, definitely an asset to the school for so many years that we've had the AP courses. I can't even imagine all the hundreds of students that you've been able to help out through the years, but I'm sure you hear back from them. And if you don't, they should give you some feedback, so you, I mean, that's how you can kind of make changes in the system. I'm sure you do hear from them, I hear from their parents in that group.
Anybody have seven, eight questions or comments soon?
First of all, congratulations, your scores are good.
Both of you.
The students that got three to five are really well. Just a question, so this report says that 294 tests were taken. How many students participated in advanced placement courses?
That's a good question because it's not the same because we have multiple students taking multiple exams. So I wouldn't know the, you know, the answer to that, but I would say it's fewer than 294.
Can we, is there a way to do that?
Yeah. We do, this past year, we had 150 students who took assessments. So it really seems that many of them take two. We do have some that take more than two. I know Larissa has some children who take her two and then they may also be taking an English. Another popular one is to take both the literacy and the language in the English AP area. So there were 150 students this past year.
I know in past years, you know, going back several years ago, we were really encouraging students who take the AP classes to take the AP exams. And it seems like that number has increased compared to many years ago where people were taking the class but not the exam. So are we still sort of promoting that? Because that's sort of the expectation.
All of our students who take the AP class, unless it's an illness or some other extenuating circumstance, will sit for the assessment. I think that's important. And I think this year, and this year, S R two will be picking up the fee for all of those exams for a cost of just under $30,000 for all students.
So hopefully, all those parents and students out there will be happy to hear that. Will not have the cost of taking those exams this year. It would be nice if we could offer it more years, but at least we have the money and we can do it this year. Anybody else have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I apologize.
That's okay. So the one thing that stuck out to me though was in general, the science. We were always so strong in sciences. And it's kind of disappointing that a lot of the sciences, you know, we're below passing on most of them. I was shocked with physics as well, so I mean.
So if I may, these ladies are jumping as well. One of the things we found across the nation and globally is that the math and science programs, whether it's assessed by MCAS or by SATs or by AP, the virtual instruction for sciences and mathematics really, the students really struggled. So again, this past year, it was all virtual and we were in a pandemic. So to be honest, we're thrilled that we have these dedicated teachers and that we had 150 students who did persevere this past year and take 294 assessments. So we are absolutely thrilled, but you are right. The translation of the instruction in a remote environment may not have been exactly what our students were used to in the past. And knock on whatever wood we have, won't have to do it this year.
If I can just speak to that for a second, I know you know the physics person pretty well. I wouldn't trade a physics, AP physics teacher for anyone in the state of Massachusetts. I can just tell you that the work that they put in over the summer, I know they're disappointed. The first two questions were hands-on lab experiential questions that we weren't here last year. And I think that's what it really speaks to is that we didn't have that opportunity to do. And those were the first two questions right off the bat last year. So we're aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ron?
Yeah, I got, I got, I got, I got two questions. The first one over here on the bottom, over here on both pages. It says data for classes with a enrollment, fewer than 10 is not reported. Do you have any, do you have that information?
We absolutely do.
Would it, and I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be the devil. How much of a difference would it be if you had those results here? Then you had these results, how much of a difference would it, would it show?
So the results are actually in the aggregate totals at the top. The reason that if there's a class with less than 10, 10, is for the confidentiality of the students. So if we knew that there was, there were two students that took drawing class and we gave you those results, we'd be basically telling everyone what those specific children got. So it's a confidentiality piece. The instructors do get the results for all of their children. We just don't publish those.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, I can't remember her name, the lady right over here. You said you went to Utah to take those reading classes? You were reading.
To grade the actual exams, we grade them.
And you've been doing that for?
13 years.
Okay. Have, how, I just bit my tongue. How much of a change have you noticed from then to today? And what precipitated those? Can you, can you tell what precipitated those changes? The way it was written or who was writing it?
Yes.
Or the themes, the different kind of themes? And what precipitated those themes?
I can tell you that throughout the years, the College Board has moved much farther away from heavy content area learning to much more to skills-based learning. And they have done a complete redesign of each and every one of their exams to focus on specific skills, both in the sciences and in the social sciences, that students will need to know in order to, in order to do well in later, in later classes. And they really have done a great job of, you know, maintaining content areas. So it's not like if you go into environmental science, you don't learn about environmental science, but there are, that there are specific skills that every scientist should be able to know how to use, that they're also learning at the same time. And the same thing is true in the social sciences.
So have you noticed if it's resulted in more expression of critical thinking versus skill testing? Or a battle between skills testing and critical thinking or putting it together? Anybody can jump in and tell me, you know?
I think that those go hand in hand. If you're doing, if it's a skills, like for example, so like on my exam, when they redesigned it, one of the questions that is specifically geared for is that they have to design an experiment based around an issue that they would have learned about in the course. So they need to take what they learned about the content, but apply it to be able to design an experiment where, whether you're taking environmental or biology or chemistry, you would still have to be able to design an experiment and have that skill and have that critical thinking where you can design an experiment and have it be coherent. But regardless of what subject that you're actually doing it in, that's going to be going across the board. So I think skills-based and critical thinking really kind of go hand in hand together.
You're nodding your head now, just, I want to know what you're thinking too, ma'am.
Oh, I'm thinking the exact same thing. That, at least the skills that we are learning in the social sciences and in history are things like learning how to identify changes and continuities over time, comparing and contrasting different societies.
That's where I was, that's where I was fishing for.
Okay.
The comparison, contrasting.
Okay.
How do you, how do you make, how, I just bit my tongue again. How do you make them exhibit that? Or how do you have them produce that?
They, they write open-ended essays on these exams that require them to apply that skill, to compare and contrast different, you know, different societies, different religions, whatever, whatever the content is for the exam. But they all, they need to know how to complete that specific skill based on the content that they're given.
I think one of the great things about the courses is the curriculum that's outlined for them. It's a nationwide curriculum, it's a proven curriculum. So all of that is covered throughout, throughout the year. So they're very prepared.
I wasn't trying to be the devil's advocate. I just, I just, just basically I wanted to know, you know?
But it sounds like you're helping them to frame it and to sort of package it so that in the critical end of this thing, you know, looking at it from this is how we apply this, this is the process. So getting to where we're trying to get to and make sure we covered all the areas. And that's what it sounds like. Not only the lesson plan, but the critical skills you need to get in to dive into it to be able to compare and contrast and use some sort of a process to do that. So it sounds like you're training them to do that as well.
Right, you take that knowledge and be able to apply it.
Right.
It's very authentic learning, very authentic.
Once you get that training, you do it with everything.
Yes.
Exactly.
You use it as a, just a way of life, which is what we're trying to do with critical thinking, right, get everybody in that mode.
Right.
Anybody else have any?
Well, wonderful job.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, awesome. Let your kids know, we've got them on their piece.
How are the, how are the class sizes roughly? Just of a 20, 15, 10?
My class, I went from 12 last year, I'm up to 27 this year, so.
Wow, that's great.
Nice.
I have 25 of each, so that's, that's pretty healthy, yeah.
Yeah.
And I have two classes of AP world, so that's really 50 students.
That's awesome. Great, we should learn you, thank you.
We'll talk to have those all those intelligent breakies.
Thank you.
We got to stay on topic, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have the update on the PLD.
Yes. So let me just take a step back in time on the, just to catch everybody. I realize everybody's entering the whole field thing at a different level. So let me just spend a second to go back in time. But the field started with the redesign at Doyle Field. And originally, it was going to be, you know, we're going to include the track. And then, design-wise, it was felt that it would be much better if the track was up here at the high school. And then we came across a plan back in 1963 that showed a plan to, that originally when they built the school, they're going to build the fields in the recreation area, which they never did. So we looked at the plan and said, well, it's kind of foolish to just build tracks up here. Let's look at, we need, at the time, we really needed more fields because there were so many students going back and forth from the high school every day for practices. And it just, this was not, this is a liability, not practice fields. So then we took the plan and said, let's just build another full-size recreational area, all-purpose recreational areas, add the track, add some, whatever the schools needed in addition to, and we did. And so one of the first things we did is we did some ground samples. We did some borings to get an understanding what the topography was and what was in the ground. And what we found is basically soil that held water. It's just sponge. But it was still, you could still do it, it just, it's highly, it's an engineering, you know, it's an engineering task to take the water from that spot, properly get it over to the wetlands and discharge and detention basins and all of that. So the other part is that a number of people moved into this area with a new subdivision, and now they had fields. And obviously, they were concerned about, is this going to be, are these going to be fields that, exactly where would they be? How close to their properties? Are we building this area, we going to rent them all? Because look at what's happened at Doyle, we're, you know, 700 games a year. Are we going to rent the facility out? So we had a number of meetings with the neighbors and we moved things around. Each time we met, we had to change the entrance back here. You know, we were trying to come there because they're the ones that have to live with the project. Once the project's built, we all live in different areas, they're the ones that are going to have to live next to the project. So we ended up defining this in narrow scope, saying, this is for the schools. We're not renting it out. This is really, that's the purpose of building the facility is so that the schools would have an area where, even if you wanted to go off a gym, you really can't safely take anybody out to gym. But engineering-wise, going back with the AD director, he made some changes. So it's taken a little bit of time, but they're finally there. They have, they're waiting on some electrical engineering to make sure there's some proper power, so they're going back and forth on that. And then it's off to the planning board and then we're pretty much done and then it can go up the bid. And hopefully, you know, like the police station, hopefully the bids are competitive and people are willing to bid on it. But the engineering is important or that will affect the bids. So at least now we know how we can successfully build this site as wet, as wet as it might be without negative. And also, the AD director, Coach Pelosi, did a really good job of looking at this on his own and other coaches. So they've actually designed this thing. And that was a change later, late in the process, but they've actually designed it so they can actually use it for multiple sports. So now, instead of just looking at it saying it's a practice field for the high school football, now you can use it for many, many more things. And that all fits in with the scope of the project. And so we had to deal with, you know, lighting. And, you know, some of the concerns for the neighbors were, you know, are we going to come down, are our houses going to be lit up? So we're using, if we were to light it up, it would be lighting that would, all the lighting worlds change engineering-wise. It lights what you want it to light. If you've ever come in off 190 sometimes at the tall street field, you can see it from Worcester some days when you're coming home with a hill. It's just the whole neighborhood's lit up. And, and so we wanted to make sure we got all those things straight. We even wrote up a little memorandum of understanding between the neighbors and us saying, we, you know, and again, the school committee's going to have to pass this. We're only going to use this. We have no intentions of turning this into renting it out to other organizations and, you know. So none of that. And, and so all that's been done, all that engineering. So now, you know, we can, we can go up the bid. We have a finance plan for it, so it, you know, it'll be paid for. We'll have to wait and see what the bids are. But, so Whitman and Begum is at the final step, which is just the electrical, they're going back and forth on some electrical. We don't plan, Paul, I think we, we didn't plan on putting lights in originally. We may rough them in, and that's what they're looking at is, can you rough them in and then later if you decide and the neighbors said, hey, no problem? You know, the lighting world has changed five years from now, 10 years from now. We're not going to see it, it's not going to affect us. Because this time of year, a lot of the sports is still in its docket, you know, 5, 6 o'clock in the afternoon. So they spent a lot of time making sure that we build a project that is neighbor-friendly and a project that the athletic department has had a chance to look at it, other coaches. So it's had a lot of community input. So it's taken a little extra time, but I think it's well worth it in the end. And again, they have to live with the project. So if we don't have their input, you know, they've gone another 20 years where, you know, we're, it's an adverse situation here and contentious. So, yeah, so once the planning board, you know, they do their part, you know, look it over. I can't imagine, all of the departments have had a chance to go over it. They've all had positive recommendations on the plan, so it can go up the bid. Obviously, they won't start in the middle winter. I mean, you don't want to start a project like that in the middle winter, but hopefully the bids are competitive and off we go. So fully funded, fully designed, reviewed by planning board, and I think we're off.
The only comment I, I'm very excited to see that we're, you know, finally again, we at the stage that we can start, you know, putting shovels of ground in the near future is the lighting piece because we have lots of good intentions about, you know, oh, we can do this piece of the project down the road and that never, ever seems to come to fruition. And the cost is going to, you know, certainly not decrease, only increase, you know, five years from now or whatever. So for me, ideally, I would like to see everything done as much as possible because I just think, you know, we never kind of get around to it or it gets lost. You know, this whole committee might not be here, you know, down the road and the city councilors might not be down, same ones down the road.
Well, this happened in 63, they're going to build, they said, oh, we'll build it down the road. And next thing you know, 50 years later.
And we've said that about many things. I mean, there was the, you know, Sam said to add on, you know, 10 additional classrooms and then, you know, that never happened. I mean, there's just lots of.
What didn't happen because they changed the educational space requirements.
Right, right.
You had to build another gym, you had to.
Right, exactly. But what I'm saying is, you know, there's lots of things, who knows what's going to happen.
It probably will go in as a, a bid alternate. But the neighbors were adamant about, you know, the, and their position is, okay, what if nobody's around anymore? Your lights are in and somebody just unilaterally decides that we're going to have night games and we're going to, you know, so their, their thing is, that's why memorandum of understanding. So we're going to rough it in, you know, we'll rough it in. That's the real cost of it, bringing in the ample, bringing in three-phase power, whatever is needed to, you know, light it up. And then, and then the other part is, you know, the technology on lighting, just like students were talking about tonight, it's changing daily.
Oh, 50, 55.
You save.
And so.
Right. And there's a way of lighting directing opposite of the thing.
But I think most people have that, you know, experiences. You know, you light up the whole neighborhood and, you know, you're trying to have some fire jowls and the whole place is, you know, lit up like Star Trek. So that's what they're thinking now. We know that we can do lighting that just lights up, you know, the areas that you're trying to light up. And we can actually stop it. There is actually the study that they did. It does show a little bit of overage, it does show it going on to the. It does show it going on to the properties by, you know, five feet in some cases and ten. You know, whether we can get that better or not, get it to, you know, get it closer so it's not, you know, spraying out to those. But that's what the lighting report showed. So we had to be honest with them and tell them, this is the report and it does show some encroachment into their property. So it, the biggest thing is getting it roughed in because that's a whole new job if you have to start tearing everything up. So it'll be roughed in and then if there's.
I can appreciate that and I want the neighbors to be happy, but I just know that we don't always get around to doing things like we should in a timely fashion.
And the neighbors, again, to them, they bought property that didn't have the field. So they, you know, they had some gym and some practices, but it was pretty much over there, it wasn't really a negative impact. And now they're going into, you know, what they're thinking is, is this gonna be another Doyle Field? I mean, Doyle Field's a busy place. And, um, so we didn't wanna have that kind of contentious, you know, project where, you know, it's us against the buddies and we're just hates with the kids kind of thing. Rather than have had, and they had a lot of input into us, every change we made, they, they were right there with us.
Anybody else? Um, Sue, then Ron.
The, um, what are the provisions for parking? I know there were a lot of concerns about parking.
They're adding parking, yeah.
Also, will he be cap accessibility?
Yep. And you're gonna be able to come in from.
Is it gonna be sufficient, though?
Right. Yeah, yeah, we have to, that's why we go to the planning board, all the calculations we made. But they're gonna, you know, the entrance was moved more towards the inside rather than building a road right next to the neighbor. So you'll come into the school property and you will get into the roadway that way. It'll feed out this way so it can accommodate buses and, and, yeah, the whole park will be built for ADA compliant. They'll have the track around it and, you know, I mean, we even got into, some people were like, well, we don't want anybody coming up here. Like, the neighbors are gonna come up here and use it, you know? So it can't just be for schools, there's other people in the neighborhood, obviously, would say, I'm not gonna walk, I'm not gonna get on a Doyle if I can go right here. So, you know, we try to work those things out and, but I think we've reached agreement as to what, you know, so that everybody's, you know, the neighbors, the school department and, and the engineers are all in, you know, sync with each other. But Whitman and Benjamin said, it's one of the toughest projects they've had to do. Environmentally, they have to make sure they can get that, you know, wet site and get that, you know, detained and then slowly released into the wetland.
Sue, did you have anything else? Ron?
That's where I was coming.
Yep.
Maybe you don't know the answer, maybe you do know the answer. How much water are we talking about? How much water can it retain? And how much water is being diverted to where? And can it tolerate the diversion? What's the, what's the, what's the, oh, what's the world, what's, what's the cap limit on the water? How much water has to come before you have to stay, it has to stop?
Is there. The calculations, they mention square footage, um, it goes into detention basins, they will then drain it slowly, we'll release it to the other side of the road where you basically go over that little bridge on the side there to go on the exchange street, you go over that little bridge and, you know, discharge into there. So it's a calculation to various, you know, surfaces and has to get by the, you know, by the conservation commission and all of that. I don't know the exact calculations as to, but it's, it's not good drainage soil. And so they take the parking lots, those have to have a drainage plan because you can't have, you know, on a hot day, the, you know, boiling hot water going directly into the discharge into the wetlands. So all those calculations have been done. I don't know offhand what they, you know, what the per square foot drainage calculations. No, that's how they, catch basins are designed to catch urban run, runoff. You know, that's the separation part of it, right?
But the cars are gonna be parked on tar or cement or something, they're not gonna be parked on the grass.
Just ask.
I don't know.
The ground, just like, just like the parking lots now.
Does he assume the land is like a sponge, a sponge, as you know, takes the stuff in? You have to squeeze it to get it out.
Right, so you take the drainage calculations and what you can do, that's why they did the test boards. And they're gonna capture that water, it'll go in the drainage system and then slowly discharge into the front of the street. That's how this is all designed, this building right here. This is the same soil here as, as it is up top, it isn't any different.
I guess, because basically, at Seastorm, a windy field, whatever you wanna call it, where service merchandise was, if you remember, and that atrium, when it rained a lot, there's a part of that land or the inside, it would, it would crack. And every, every so often, they'd have to come and fix the, fix the inside of that place.
That's in the flood plain, this is not, it's just different soil. All these houses here are built in the same material, it just had to, you know, excavate it carefully and put it in the right drainage.
Okay, all right, no, I just.
It's all engineered, I'm not an engineer, but I understand, you know, we're paying big money to make sure that the water is captured and by merely pushed out into the, into the wetland.
Melissa, did you know what's coming?
So big question, based on where we're at now, what do we think is the realistic finish date for it? If everything goes the way it's supposed to.
Yeah, I, so we put it up the bid.
Yep.
And it'll say the start date is, I don't know that I wanna be out here in middle winter or early spring.
Right.
But let's say dry out season starts to be in May.
Yep.
I would say they're here, you know, usually you give a contractor on a five million dollar project, you give them a year to do the project.
Right.
From start to finish, that means punch list and everything from, you know, the clock starts ticking once you give them notice to proceed. You give them notice to proceed and they know, well, you did it, you told them exactly how much time to get to do the project. Maybe it's eight months, but I'm just using.
So summer twenty-three, everything, subject to weather.
A year to. Right, a year to set up, right, to catch a, maybe a wet, you know, by then they're past that. But, because they have to set up temporary drainage systems while working, right? So they have to put, you know, hay bales and tieback and all of that. And then temporarily little, um, you know, diversion ponds to catch it in the event that that doesn't, right? So just because, you know, once they start digging and they're gonna have a lot of cut and fill, if you look, it's, it's kinda like.
It's a huge project.
Yeah, it's all over the place.
Right.
So there's a lot of cut and fill just to get to the grade where you want to, you know, the subgrade. So, um, they're gonna have to put these little detention, temporary detention basins until, so it's a big project. A lot of it's gonna be contingent upon the weather, but I can't, I can't imagine, it's all site work, most of it.
Right.
And so, you know, like I said, you give them a full year, like most big construction projects, we give them two years and they're done in a year and a half. So I assume they're done earlier, but just in case, you give them a full year to do the whole punch list and all the sign-offs.
Well, that's exciting. All right, um, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Marlene said about the lights. I'm disappointed that the plan doesn't include starting with them. I get the concerns of the neighbors, but you've also explained why modern lights work better and don't have that. And I just gotta tell you, after ten years of coaching youth soccer, I've lost count of how many practices I had to cancel early because it got too dark once they like savings. We're so worried about how much we're limiting the usefulness of the fields if you can't extend practices in.
We can put it in as a bid alternate and if the prices come in manageable, then we can go back to the neighbors and say, you know, the prices came in, they're decent, it's a bid alternate, let's, let's, let's put them in. But I didn't wanna have the whole project come to a stalemate, at least that we could settle on roughing it in because that's the greater expense, is all the site work that goes into it, running the proper. Later on, if the project's built and then you have to tear it all up, it's unlikely it's gonna happen because now you're tearing up everything, the running electricity and whatever power you need to power it up is probably not the right size that you're using from the, you know, traditional part of the school and the service is not big enough, you need three-phase. It, it, so we settled on, let's at least rough it in and we'll go from there. Now, I think we had a lighting report that showed that it didn't spray into their yards. I think we would have been in a better position, but the report we had done showed it spraying into the yards. So, um, you were down to that final piece.
All right, thank you very much, Dean. Um, we're gonna move on to district assessments, Renee, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Marlene's passing out some of the material that we have to show tonight around the assessments. And, um, we don't have any district per se data quite as of yet because a lot of our students, month of September was a little tough for them. And so we are keeping our, um, assessments open for a longer period of time to make up for students and.
Just for the benefit of somebody that might be watching, can you just explain? I know, when we talk about things a lot of times, we're not, it's one of the things we're talking about. So can you just kind of second on, on what we're looking at?
Yeah, I, I, I will. Um, so, um, the assessments that you have in front of you, we gave a class report on the map, which is given to K through five students, so a report that a teacher would get for those students and what they're, what it would look like to them. We also gave you a student report on the dibbles, which is the fluency. And so as you look at these reports, the teachers have these reports in front of them and be able to identify the students of need in the different tiers that they might have to be placed in depending on if they need intervention or if they need explicit intervention for a tier three instruction that might be a resource setting or different setting at the time. All our students receive tier one instruction, um, and that's K through twelve at this point in time. Even our ELL students all receive the tier one instruction at some point. If you, um, look at this, this teacher's broken down, if you look at the first two pages, it's a reading assessment from the map. So I just picked one grade and, and you can see how it's, um, it's broken down first about, if you look at the colored chart, it's broken down to the highest to the lowest amount and it gives you a number of students who have done that. And then it's broken down by, the next page, it's broken down by the strand that the students did well in or did not do well in. So they can see where those strands are that students are. So when they get to, for an example, if you look at this grade four reading, you have three students who right now are in the low percentile, which is below twenty-one percent. And those same three students, but if you look at the second page, there is three students who, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at math, sorry, um, have algebraic thinking, but there's four that has measurement and data. There's geometry that have four and number of operations have two. So when they look at the class as a whole, they average it, but then they can go and identify specific students for each of these sections of percentiles for them to be able to be serviced as needed.
I'm sorry, Renee, could you, could you just go through one whole row and kind of?
Yep.
I, I understand the detail below, right? Just go through the row, but I'm trying to figure out how many total included in this.
So if you go on the top, so I have the math, K through twelve.
Yeah.
If you go on top, which is her, her class, there's nineteen students.
Yeah.
Um, the mean score of all those nineteen students were two oh two point nine. The median rate was two oh six. Standard deviation is thirteen point seven and these really, um, at this point in time, that's just their, their average. But we don't have any district data because we haven't shut down the assessments yet because we still have a lot of kids who are taking assessments due to being out and sick. And the teachers, everyone wants an assessment on a child before the, before the report card. So we are keeping that open. Our IT stands for, I know, but I just wanna make sure I have that right.
I don't have the acronym, um, on, in my head, but it's, um, it's how they norm the assessment nationally. So there's a RIT score that would be, um, will get for the entire country, all the kids who take the assessments as soon as the, the fall ones are, are scheduled. And then we can look at where we stand, our students stand either individually by class or by district, where, what our RIT is, um, and then the standard deviation of our students as compared to the national norms.
So it's just sort of a math trait model.
It is, yes.
So on this, this math, piggyback on, I think it was Sue or Mike's, you, you said it was nineteen students, correct? And students at or above grade level is twelve. I'm not a scientist and I'm not mad at petition, but that comes out to being sixty-three percent. Am I right or am I wrong? Did I calculate it wrong?
You are right.
Huh?
Yep, that's sixty-three, twenty-two.
Now, is that above or below what we're shooting for?
Everyone.
So right now.
I'm just, I'm just asking, guys.
Right now, what we're looking for is to provide teachers with data both about their class and about every single child that's sitting in front of them.
Okay.
So we're not really comparing this to, well, we're not comparing it to last year or the year before at all because clearly we had, we are not.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to.
We're giving data to the teachers to say, okay, there are three that are in red or low. We know, the teacher knows who those three are and as Renee mentioned, they can then go and say, oh, is this three? Is that about number sense, is it about geometry? So we're giving very detailed information to the teacher about those nineteen children that are sitting in front of them and that helps them then to plan for their small group instruction and their large group instruction.
So I noticed that everyone gets tier one instruction and then there's a couple of other instructional levels for kids who need, you know, further assistance, but I don't see any for those kids who are already achieving high to necessarily get challenged more and achieve higher.
So at all of our levels, we have a reteach, well, it's called something different at different levels, but a reteach and enrich at the elementary. So if you have a child who might be in the blue as compared to the red one, they're doing their classroom work, they will have enrichments and all of our programs have those. And then during the reteach and enrich piece, those students would be given enrichments. In the middle school, they're calling it a wing block and that's what I need.
What I need now.
What I need now, thank you. And so knowing this information about those children, that wing block is used either to provide them with additional supports that they need or to have a teacher who will move them forward with extensions and maybe moving further into, in depth into a standard or even moving up into a grade level standard above where they're at.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were not.
Absolutely, you're right. Thank you.
So basically, this is an assessment tool for the different curriculums to measure where's particular student. The whole class is, but where particular students might be. And then from that, as we talked about last time, now your sort of diagnosis is, is done or at least your assessment is done and now it's, okay, here's how we're gonna go back and challenge the student that's doing very well. Maybe they need to be in AP courses or, you know, extra work to challenge them. But on the other hand, we've got these other students we've gotta bring up at the same time. So we're kind of operating in two different fronts. But the overall is, as Mike was saying, the overall goal is to get everybody to the finish line at, I guess, a hundred percent, right?
No, no, that's true. And then the student reports, I mean, it's hard, I mean, the teacher reports, I was trying to get to the, really the last two pages around, you're asked about how we're supporting students.
Right.
And so if you look at my last two pages, kind of defines our three tiers that we do and that's K through twelve, um, around what tier one is, how all students are getting it. Tier two is providing our small group instruction, whether it's in the classroom, in the general ed, which we try to do for inclusion pieces. And there at times we need to pull out for certain kids or if they're receiving a speech or an OT, that type of thing. And then our tier three is our individualized, um, problem solving around students who need very explicit skill-based things. And I kind of gave you guys what the time is, what each grade level gets, our group sizes, our location. And we're even advertising for more personnel right now. We've got them going up right now at the K through, um, nine pretty well, but we're still looking for more tutors to help out when some of those, put that some of that small group instruction and individualized.
So that parent-teacher conference, I'm just saying.
Yes, they did.
I, I don't know how you.
Nope.
Narrow it down to a, um.
So each parent gets their student report.
And then, and then an explanation so they understand, well, okay, my child's having some problems. And this is a really good graph you're explaining, this is what we're gonna do. If your child falls into one of these tiers, this is how it's gonna be addressed.
So we can pinpoint, so what a teacher, you have the surface level. So under each one of these numbers, a teacher will go in, you can click right on it and you see Johnny and Johnny, right? And this and this. So then you can bring up their individual reports, so those get shared out during those conferences. And this assessment is done at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year in case there's a, you know, correction that needs to be made if children aren't, aren't on the trajectory. And then we test them again at the end of the year and hopefully we get to do it all three times.
So I don't know if it's just me, but I have the math data twice and no reading data.
No, so if you look, they both say, um, the way these reports fill out, so you have one class that says grade level reading.
Right, the first two pages say they're gonna be reading, but then it's the math test. Something went wrong with the print, I think.
Okay, oh, don't want to.
Because the header says reading, but then the results are math.
Well, we have a so.
And then the next two pages say they're math and it's. And then the next two pages say they're math and it's.
That's right.
It's either math.
Oh, yeah. We copied it wrong.
And correctly, we'll certainly get you an example.
I'll give you the reading.
But the first one is the reading, correct?
It's supposed to be reading.
It says it was reading, but it's actually math. Okay. I got the math data twice instead of the reading and the math.
Right, so one page, so that's one.
I'm curious, if you get a chance, I'd like to see what the reading one looks like.
As soon as this is all done, we will give you the district level, the bird's eye view. Right now, within the classrooms, teachers have their own.
Yeah.
The assessment teams have school-based district level, has building-based and district level reports. And so everything is now.
Yeah. Intervention, tier two has been put in place, kids have been identified and they've been notified to their parents that they're identified. We have to throw a title one, so, and then the tier three, obviously our specialized instruction, we're always notified, so.
It's too bad, I know this makes you.
I know it's hard.
Mission impossible, but it's too bad, I mean, you've got all this data and if you're building sort of layers over it, right? That you could automatically, like at the end of the week on a Friday, an email go out to the parent and student saying, this is where your child's at as of the close of the week. Right? I mean, you're almost there. I mean, you've, you've got everything here, right? Got student's name, all the information. I'm just saying down the road, maybe there's another layer that automatically, without, you know, just a matter of inputting the data, that it spins out to, so the parent can keep track by the week on where the student might be.
So we have the map, the measure of academic progress is a three-time per year, just to measure growth. Another one of the ones we're tactic is DIBELS and that's a fluency. That one, the, the children who are at risk, they are then progress monitored. So they receive specific instruction and every two weeks, there's more information.
There are some, clearly, we need the help of the parents.
But what I was going to say is.
There are some parents who do receive that information and say, okay, what is it that I can do? And the teachers work with them to say, we're working on letter, the.
The long O sounds.
Right.
Simply, yeah, so please read these two. So a lot of our teachers have little bags with their sounds that they're struggling with or with their fluency levels, they can practice that fluency with reading, so.
So the DIBELS is a completely separate, that's another assessment that we bring around early literacy. And so that one is, if you're progress monitored, you're notified right away, families are notified. We do ask that you continue so their homeworks or the exercises that we practice, they get into an intervention group and then every two weeks, we put the data in and then we have to notify.
Remember the old days at the end of school when a kid didn't pass?
No.
But in front of course, they'd be like, Johnny's flunked. I didn't know Johnny flunked or graduation.
No surprises, or shouldn't be any surprises.
They weren't going to graduate, you're like, I don't understand what happened. We, the whole year went by, nobody said anything. Or maybe the student didn't bring home the letter or something, or they didn't bring home the report card. There was a shock to everybody, so, sounds like you got it buttoned up here.
Yeah.
Are you going to do Peter then Sue?
For the DIBELS, I'm just curious because it looks like in the report you gave, the table you gave us, that some of the students, you know, way overshot what the benchmarks are. And then, you know, obviously.
It's their kindergarten class.
Okay, do, uh, do those benchmarks change throughout the year?
Yes, they do.
Okay, all right.
They go off every.
That, that's what I was figuring and hoping, because.
They're, they're all developmental.
Yeah, okay.
Are you talking about this, how do you read this?
Do you read it? The teacher's actually asking what it looks like.
This is the, this is the worst table I've ever seen.
I know. Can I tell you, we swear by these.
You took in the name of the names.
It doesn't have child's name.
Across everything.
So I don't need to see the names. So each one of these is, is a particular, all the way across is one student?
Is one student and then I gave you guys a kind of cheat sheet of what like, letter name fluency. So that's all.
I mean, same in sex, yeah.
Right, so, so these are, these are anonymous children. So these are children who are below and that and above.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
You have, you have blues and greens.
Okay.
Love, blues and greens.
And what are the numbers next to them? The score they got?
Yes.
Yes.
In that category?
Yes.
Now I understand.
And you'll see at the top, there's benchmark.
And our, our staff enters each and one of these every two weeks, the new progress monitoring. So then we keep track of that.
And we actually call this a DIBELS sweep. So we bring in everybody to sweep through students, assess them as rapidly as we can with all students go through this.
Sue? So the DIBELS is more of an individual assessment, but you also use it to reteach the curriculum, you know, to reteach.
No, so DIBELS is an assessment, we use foundations as a, a research base to help with the, with the instruction around learning their letter, letter sounds and making them more fluent in reading when they, when they do it. And then they also have a double dose if they're not getting it. So they're assessed also in foundations with unit tests to make sure that they're not falling behind. If they do, they have a tier two instructor who comes in and gives them a double dose and then they retake it until they get it. So we try, we try not to keep too many children behind.
Okay, but it's not used as a district type of.
It's K through five, all of us use it.
Okay, no, because.
All, us use the assessment, this is an assessment only, it's not so much, it's nothing to do with, like an instructional piece to it. We use this assessment to help with our instruction within the classroom setting.
Yeah, okay. And when do you think we'll get the, the total MCAS?
The MCAS?
Well.
The map.
Yeah, the map.
The map. They asked me to open, keep it open to the end of October. And so we will do that, so as soon as we can get that, you know, hopefully we'll, we can get some more data up to put to district.
Okay, and I did find out what RIT stands for.
Okay, what is it?
It's Roush Unit Scale. So it's a scale that it uses out of Santa Ana.
Roush Unit Scale?
Roush, R A S C H.
Probably the person's name.
I have a quick question.
Good, I'm sorry. I can get a follow-up later, but yeah.
I live with two teachers, so I hear progress monitoring and DIBELS all the time. So I'm kind, I'm good on those. But I have a quick question on how you differentiate a student from starting at tier one. I assume that's where all kids originally start until they're assessed. And then how do they transition from a tier one student to tier two or tier three? And I assume it's based on assessments like this, but.
So we look at this assessment, so we sit down at my, like academic content teachers who are doing the intervention and we look at the average. And then we do usually, so if you look at the average, it says to six, to forty-one percent.
Yeah.
So we give that a ten percent scale, basically. So we go, anything below thirty-one percent, we service for tier two instruction.
Okay.
And then we, and depending, if that thirty-one percent, they might be a resource teacher where they're already getting tier three instruction. So it could be an ELL who's getting the level one and then they get the tier two instruction from title. So as a lot that goes into it, we have huge data meetings that, like, you know, I just sat with one on Friday, going over every child, looking at every child's needs, what they have, what they don't have. And we make sure they have prescribed tier instructions so that they're successful.
So tier two stays very fluid. When students acquire the skill, we're not going to waste.
Right.
No.
That's move on and then we're moving on to something else. And now that student has acquired or has excelled in another area, but this one needs to have that.
We look at data every six to eight weeks and we change groups. And we look at a group that might not be moving, we wonder why and we figure out what we're going to use for instructional routines next time for them because it didn't work.
Got it.
Anybody else? I think Ron had a hand up.
I am curious. The, this DIBELS we have right in front of us. I know the assistant superintendent, Jim, Jim Riley, he was saying, you know, when the kids come in, when they're being processed right at the beginning. And he was saying how, you know, it's kind of sets up for you to know where they're going to be. How predictive were those assessments as compared to, were they spot on? Did they?
So we do screenings and you're talking about like.
Screening, how did the screen?
Screening.
Could this, does a screening predict any of this? No? Yes? Someone, half?
They're, they're all predictable.
Yeah.
But we don't stand on any one piece of data. So as Renee had mentioned, you have a data meeting. You're looking at what the children are actually reading. So the teacher brings in anecdotal information, we bring in the screener, we bring in DIBELS, we bring in MAP and as many different pieces of data that we can to draw the picture of that child.
But that screening when the kid first comes in, does that screening, does that help to project what these, what these numbers are going to be saying?
It helps to form the picture of, of that child.
How much, how much, how, how, how much does it help to, or does it?
They're all helpful, nope. All pieces of data tell a story and we want to use as many of them as we can. And we don't overassess. So the screening, every year, our early childhood people look at the screening. Kim Woodford in Special Education also supports that. And every year, we refine those screenings so that it's not a huge burden on the children but still provide us with all the information that we can possibly use, so.
How much of a percentage does it predict the screening of the, of the kids? You know, like.
I don't have an answer for you for that one.
It's too, it's too hard, too difficult, it's too murky.
It'd have to do.
It's just together.
Because I, you can't.
I would need Michael's help with some statistical analysis to actually do that.
You know, I, I'm not trying to poke fingers into the cloth, but you know, you have this, but something you must have been able to predict. It's like weather forecasting, you know, you could.
I think Ronnie, when we think about screening, you can think about that. It's harder to tell what students look like before an intervention. So then once we start teaching and doing an intervention, then we start to see through this data, who are the kids that are grasping it. And we definitely gives us a sense of, you know, where this, where we may have some students who have higher needs. But once intervention happens, that's where the magic.
And even just the gen ed instruction too. So this is a picture of a kindergarten class.
Right.
That means these children are coming to us from, if, if they were lucky enough to have an early childhood experience, many of them over the last two years didn't because they were home with their parents. Some of them have older brothers and sisters. So there's so many variables and that screening then helps us. But boy, once we get these children in, in January, once we've had instruction and intervention where it's necessary, we really do see how far those kindergarten children come. And they're a lot more centered and much less disparate as far as their results.
I, I wasn't, I, I guess basically, I wasn't asking if there was a tablerrasa, that, you know, there was nothing there, but.
I wish there was.
Yeah, I know.
It can't just be cutting it out of sheer cloth. I know that they're getting this somewhere, that's all I'm asking.
But the overall goal, I mean, at the end of the year, when you're looking at this and comparing to the data you shared with us today, it's got to be drastically different. Otherwise, a school needs some serious intervention that obviously over the whole year hasn't worked. So you know that. So I mean, when you come back and do your final analysis, you have the end result, should look a lot different in that. Right? As a.
They're all going to be blue.
But there's no one piece of information that tells you everything you need to know about a student. If there were, we would have that and do, do that thing, but there isn't. Like everything has a small predictive value. The only way you get good prediction is to do what they're doing, which is the aggregate multiple measure.
I just want to know, could they, could they, can they, will they tell us the percentage of the predictive value?
You'd be disappointed out there.
Yeah, we do.
I mean.
But disappointed is depending on how you evaluate yourself, you know? What are, what are you looking for disappointment? It's good, better, different.
Well, there are a lot of variables.
There's so many variables to talk about.
Very, language, yeah.
Whether they had a bad day that day, whether they had the sniffles, whether they ate breakfast, there's.
But the biggest thing is that we identify the students' needs. So we don't wait till June or April to find out. So we're, we're doing, we're applying those sort of resolutions or providing the solutions to them as we go along and then we're monitoring the progress. That's what this is supposed to tell us.
Right, right, to get everybody to the finish line.
Along the way.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, thank you very much, ladies, it was very informative.
Thank you.
We're going to now do the voting policy change discussion.
So I originally put this on here, I'd like to withdraw it.
Okay.
And I think that last time, the finance committee, you know, there was some transfers here presented and we got extra time. And I was never expecting that if it's an emergency situation that we wouldn't be able to vote on. But a little bit, I don't get my agenda or even look at it until sometime around Friday. And then, who knows what happens?
Dean, you gotta look at it earlier.
And then, well, I tried, right? But, and then we have to like vote on things that one day.
Yeah.
And sometimes it doesn't give us the ample time. If it's an emergency, then I've never been in the way of an emergency.
I mean, I think there's lots of things that we can vote on right away and there's lots of things we've said, oh, we need another, you know, meeting to further discuss it.
I have no issue with that.
So we will.
I'd like to withdraw it and I think that was very helpful. Last time, to me at least, it was very helpful, gave me the extra time that I needed to kind of go through this. So, yeah, I would just like to withdraw.
All right, perfect, thank you, Dean, thank you. We're going to move on to superintendent's goals. I know we have reviewed them before, but we are going to have a further discussion on them. And then once we're done with our discussion, I'd like someone to make a motion to approve the goals so that we will have that in the record. Sue? Okay, I, I was the one that wanted to put this on the agenda because it's our job as a school committee to approve the superintendent's goals. Back in our August twentieth meeting, we asked to table the goals presented by the superintendent and have a discussion at the full meeting. And I don't think we spend enough time discussing the superintendent's goals. That's a really important part of our job. So before I get into more detail, Ron and I attended a conference, two years ago, Ron?
Yeah.
On the change in the superintendent evaluation process, the setting of goals. And it's a really important piece. And I think it's time that we spent the time that we should to, to do the goals. So I just kind of wanted to read a couple snippets out of the document that we got from MASC about goals so that we all are on the same page. So one of the key things, and, and there's a whole guide and I thought we did share it with everybody, but I'll get this to Chris and we can definitely share it with everybody.
Yes, please.
But one of the important things with goals is, so we went through the evaluation process and then we, we turned around and set up the goals for the next period. And those goals, once they're approved, we work together with the superintendent to accomplish them. And everybody, the whole district should be on the same page what the goals are. It, it should be transparent, okay? So the goals should be SMART goals, specific and strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic and results-oriented and timed and tracked. So I don't know, I mean, I'm sure everybody reviewed the goals that were presented to us, but we definitely need to talk about them because I don't understand some of them. And if everybody else does, that's fine. But I think there's too many goals here, number one. And it says that the goals and standards should be aligned with each other. You don't need, they, they recommend here, they say that you should have one student learning goal, one superintendent goal, personal goal, whatever. And I'm trying to read it quickly, but.
The district goal.
District, thank you.
So we do.
So I, I, I would like to pull it if you don't mind. I don't know if you've had a chance to see the.
Oh, yes.
And to read the focus and stuff, but I'd just like to go through this and make sure we're all on the same page because at the end of the day, we all need to approve these goals as part of our, you know, evaluation process. And, and the other thing was, I had been wanting to put together a year-long agenda and it's right in here, that is part of the goal, or at least getting you to achieve the goal is a year-long agenda where we can discuss this and make the agendas meet, you know, those things. So if we could just take a little time to go through this document and I think give it the time that it deserves, that would be important.
One of the things we talked about at that meeting was the propensity to have difficulties making the goals. Am I right or am I wrong? Because sometimes the goals change against our will. Notice with the pandemic. And so they said one of the problems with these goals that they talked about at that meeting was that, goodly or badly, we like to look at them as etched in stone. They're not etched in stone, they're like sponges. They take in what's happening and sometimes they, what's, what's taken out is lost in the translation. Am I right, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, we're fighting against ourselves on this.
Well, I don't think we're fighting, but I think.
We're fighting against ourselves.
But I think you use something that you say all the time is that's.
The doubles and the details.
Well, but it's also sort of a living document and it's something that we revisit. Dean?
Just as a, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's fine.
If, if we were to say, the school committee, and again, as Susan said, our job is to help find a common goal and say, okay, district-wide, let's, let's roll it, right? If you have one thing, you pick one thing, and it doesn't have to be that thing, just as an example, that might help us to kind of move along. One thing that you'd like to get done before the, say, the end of the, the next time that you get an evaluation, that one thing.
My student learning goals, which are just a improvement goal.
Right, I agree.
Yep.
So that's something that we conversed with you and say, look at this, I get nothing done this year. This is something I really need to get done. And then, we build sort of that energy so that the rest of the team, and the rest, the principals, assistants, everybody's pushing in that one direction, right? So it's not just you. All right, Paula, you go out and, the other superintendent, that's your goal. Good for you, get up there and help them make it happen.
Yep. Right. Yep.
It should be combined, it should be all of us saying, we need to do that, how, how can we help? That's our goal. So when we're out communicating with the public, it's, yeah, it's not just the superintendent's goal. Superintendent said she'd like to get this done. We agree, we, we wanna do our part to help. And then, that's throughout the system, right? I mean, that's, but, and then we have conversations during the course of the year saying, how are we doing? What else, you know, maybe there's transfers that we need to make because, you know, you're almost there, but, you know. That's, I think, more important, to me at least, and I think that's what Susan's getting at, is pick four things that.
I wish I could pick four things.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it.
Okay, but let me quote, let me quote the guideline, I did find it.
Go ahead, take it from there.
It says, keeping the focus on the goals makes the evaluation a tool that is unique to the individual educator, which would be the superintendent, and to the school district. In the regulations for educator evaluation, superintendents are required to have one professional practice goal related to their individual professional growth, which you did do. One student learning goal, which related to their impact on student achievement.
Yeah.
Yep. It's also recommended they, they have two to four district improvement goals that relate to the work necessary to drive the district forward. So based on that, you know, what can you, you know, to Dean's point, you know, can we go through these? Can we condense them and whatever? Because I was struggling, what I struggle with is, you know, is it measurable? Is it, you know, I mean, a goal is, you know, again, this is right out of the regs. A goal has to be specific and strategic, measurable, action oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results oriented, timed and tracked. And sometimes, like, you know, and, and I go through this and I see all the benchmarks, but, you know, what's the ultimate measurement of the goal?
And that's the evidence that I bring forward, and we start doing that when you do my midterm evaluation.
Right, but, but that's not in here? Like, what we're gonna get, I mean, that's all part of it, is, is what is the outcome?
So why don't, so why don't we, because the superintendent has covered all of those topic areas that you just mentioned. So why don't we just typically?
Do you want all these goals?
I have to have them, right.
So let's, so why don't we just go through them really to ease and, so the first one, you have a professional practice goal, number one.
So we cannot avoid COVID. I would have loved to scrub that one, but that is falling into every element of managing this district. So I need to continue that. Communication needs to remain strong. So right now, you could measure it by the amount of emails, and I apologize for it, for it. But every time I get a report on the number of cases we have, I'm keeping you updated on what's happening in our city. And because my goal, if you ask anybody, is that we're keeping our buildings open for 180 days. We have to keep this year more than ever.
Students in the classroom.
So we're doing whatever. So I cannot not say that COVID isn't the lead. I hate that it's number one.
And hopefully, at some point, this will not be a goal once the pandemic is no longer.
And I will erase it as soon as I can. Then there are four standards of being a superintendent, and the first one is being an educational leader. So currently, we have a focused approach, which has been mandated by DESI about accelerated learning. And to make sure that our students are receiving grade level rigorous materials and instruction every single day to help us through this recovery period. As you can see, data, analyzing the data is my first thing. Data's my love, data's my world. We, we really need to base all of our decisions off of data. You're starting to receive reports. You had MCAS at the last meeting, you're seeing MAP, now you're seeing DIBELS. We're having parent-student conferences, so data is coming forthright. We also have an SEL curriculum, we've talked about Tier Two. So we're providing those materials, but come February, you will have a collective series of where we stand as a district by grade level. I can't walk away from my role, because that's the lead role that I wish I was doing more and more.
So let me just interject. So you're right, you have leadership goals.
Yep.
You have.
Professional development for my staff, physical responsibility.
But we, we rate you on two things. We rate you on specific goals, which we didn't really have last year because of COVID.
Correct.
Right. But, so we rate you on specific goals, but then we also rate you on your high-level leadership, your family and.
Right. Community outreach.
Those four, that's right. But that's kind of separate, that's like kind of your, your ultimate job.
But if you look at my evaluation, that's your checkboxes.
It's not in goals, right, no, no, that's your evaluation, but you're right.
Correct.
But those are really, you know, on, those are the core, the values of a superintendent.
Correct.
The goals, which is what I'm trying to get at tonight, is just, you know, what are the measurable goals that we're gonna evaluate? And they shouldn't be, you know, maybe only four things. So I guess I, and that's maybe where I didn't see leadership as fitting into a goal.
Yep.
That's part of who you are and your job. I don't know, and I, Ron, jump in here, because we've gone through the training.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I think basically, I, in my little mind, I think professional practice one, and, professional practice one, district improvement goal, and student goal, learning one, that should be it.
I agree.
Everything else is almost, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not saying that you exaggerated.
It's not a goal.
You didn't exaggerate, because you need the professional practice.
My question is, if we're.
She need, she needs the professional practice part, it's required by DESI, am I right or am I wrong?
Yes, they need it.
Yes or no? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you almost have to put it as an addendum, even though we don't.
It's not an addendum, it's.
Whatever you wanna slice it, however you wanna play with the semantics, I don't care. But it's gotta be part of her, of her, of her goals.
Right, it is here.
And everything else, unfortunately, has to be superfluous for us, for right now, to vote on it. Because we don't want her to, we don't want her to overwork herself, because otherwise, the amount of time that she's spent on that. You can laugh at my statements, go ahead, laugh at me. But if she's overworking her, if she's over, overworking on this, she's, that means that she's missing something else, and we don't want her to miss anything.
So I just, I don't understand if, if the, the goals are only the three that Ron just pointed out. How are we as school committee members supposed to provide an evaluation on anything else if there's no standard that's laid out in this document? If we mix professional practices two through five, and then have to later evaluate her on that, we have no standard of where she should be at. This provides us with that model of what she said she was gonna set out to, don't throw the pen at myself, set out to do this year. And now we're just throwing that out the window and are gonna have nothing to compare it to.
Well, it's right out of the window.
We're not, we're still evaluating her job, her core job, her core job is, is leadership, finance, family and community engagement.
Engagement.
Right.
But this shows us exactly how she intends to meet that goal.
So, but, but, when you get her evaluation, you know, you're evaluating her, it, it's everything else going on in the community, whatever. The goals are specific and measurable. Those are over and above her job that she has.
So is, so are all the other things, though.
Yeah.
Right.
There are, they all should be.
Those are basic requirements of her job.
But they're, but they're still should be measurable, they should not be subjective, it should be measurable.
But they're also measured.
Yeah, correct.
Mike had his hand up next.
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I'll stop. Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see you, Mike, I'm sorry, you're on the other side of the floor.
It's all right, I, the conversation's going, it's fine. So I guess, I'm just trying to make, I'm just trying to understand what it is that we're actually advocating for. So do I understand, I think what I'm hearing you say, and correct me if that's not where you're going, is that you're seeing this as there's, there are two separate things. There's a description of job duty, and then there are a few aspirational goals, and those should be kept separate? Is, is that what we're understanding from the document that you've brought to us?
Goals, right, goals are SMART goals, measurable, outcome-based, they're specific to what we.
So in a sense, none of this necessarily goes away. We're gonna divide this into, to be a superintendent, you have to do leadership.
You could do that.
So that's still a category, but a goal is like the, I'm gonna make the 50% EL.
Over and above.
Yes, that's measurable, yes, that's a goal.
And so, and then I think the second thing you're saying is that the goal part of this being aspirational, there should be only a few of those. Because we wanna try to actually focus all of our attention on getting those accomplished during.
And we want everybody else. And when you have so many, it's hard to project out exactly what we're trying to get done. So our conversation is what Susan's saying is, during the course of the year, whether it's monthly or whatever, we're like, hey, how are we doing? What help do you need? Are we getting, are we making progress? Are you, are you happy with the progress? Is there something that we can do to help? And then you tie the rest of the team into it, right? Professional development and everything else, and that's.
So I could certainly see us doing that, sort of separating this into, in order to be just competent at your job or excellent at your job, this is the list of stuff. We have to do finance, we have to do leadership, we have to do professional development, and then pick a few things to be aspirational.
Right.
So then my question becomes, though, we have a specific contractual framework and a specific DESI requirement framework.
Correct.
Does separating it that way and evaluating that way comport with those two frameworks? Can we actually do that? I'm not opposed to doing it that way. That, that separation makes some sense to me. I, I agree with Sue there and Ron there. But I'm not, like, I kind of got the impression DESI said, you need to do the, evaluate these four categories and that's it. And if that's what we have to do, then we have to make sure this fits into that. So I don't know the answer to that question, but I would wanna make sure that we don't tear this into two pieces in a way that then gets us in trouble down the road with doing what we're required to do.
Well, I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure Peter and Melissa and Isabel have a chance to speak, because they have not spoken yet, and then we can circle around. So Peter, do you wanna go next, and then Melissa and Isabel?
Yeah, I only have two small things to, to add. I mean, I, I follow along with what's being raised by Sue. You know, one thing I would like to see on, on the, not on the professional practice stuff so much, but on the other goals is, you know, timelines for the benchmarks themselves. Like the, so that we can see progress towards those goals. Obviously, these are all annual goals, you know, for the school year, but, so that we know, you know, after the first quarter, we hope to be here, that sort of thing. Yeah, yeah, so just the benchmarks, giving, and, and right.
And there's a calendar of assessments, so we should be able to get that.
Yeah, and, and loose deadlines, not, you know, specific dates. And the other thing I would say is, I mean, doesn't it make sense for this to be like, to have a smaller committee? You know, do this, have a few people to figure something out, maybe not this year, because I know that we have to start evaluating some of these in, you know, not too long. But for, like, going forward to come up with a standard that we'll, that we'll use going forward. Just, that's just a suggestion, is, you're right, instead of trying to hash it out, is to have a focused group to go over that for.
I mean, just to jumpstart this thing, just as an example, what I do at my department heads is I sit down. They have a statutory, you know, by ordinance, this is what your job is supposed to be, right? And then I say, what kind of things would you like to get done this year in your department? That, really, you're passionate about, you're excited, so I can get behind that, the city council behind it. That, does that sound, Sue, like what you're trying to get to? Is there's the statutory part of it all, and then there's the, the over and above goals that she's trying to get done for the district? Does that help the?
Right, okay, so DESI has defined standards and indicators of effective administrative leadership in a document referred to as the rubrics. So the standards and indicators are defined in the regulations and are the same for all educators with a similar role throughout the state. So you have your standard evaluation, which is on those key indicators, the leadership, family engagement, whatever. All we're trying to do is work with you on, on goals, minimal goals for this year. And those goals can carry over to other years. It's, it's not like you have to finish them this year. So, so that's all I'm saying, is that I think this document is too big, you know, I think there's just too many goals in this. But I'm not even sure they're goals, you know, again, you know, I, I think, as you said, Peter, timelines and things like that. So why don't we, can't we just narrow them down?
But I do, I do wanna give Melissa and Sue, I mean Isabel, sorry, a chance to speak, because we let everybody else speak. And then, and then we can get back to it from later.
Having really going through this the first time, I'm, I understand where Paula's thinking is. And if she has more goals for herself, knowing where our district is, I have no problems with a person wanting to set more goals than what the minimum is. At the same time, if there's a focus that the committee really wants her to have, then I appreciate that. But I think that needs to come together pretty quickly since this, you know, we're a quarter of the way through the school year.
Isabel?
I think we're just nitpicking here. I think her goals are pretty specific. I know, I think Peter's suggestion is great to have a timeline in the benchmarks of every single goal you've set out. Although we do get the mid-year packet of how we are measuring and meeting such expectations for the annual year. But I think everything in here, I mean, if you want to have 15 goals, who's stopping you from having 15 goals? This district is needy. I mean, we have a lot of kids, we need to make sure they all succeed. And if you have 15 goals to do that, that's, that's totally fine with me. But unfortunately, we've tabled this discussion to October. And so I don't know if it's realistic of us to expect new goals for this, this year. And so I think Peter's suggestion of maybe having a subcommittee of folks to hash out what we want it to look like going forward, might be what's best. And then, we can still, of course, have a discussion on all of the goals that you've presented. But I don't know if it's realistic of us to expect a new format and break it down.
So I guess, just listening to everybody, what might make sense is that, a few people, including Paula, meet just to figure out of the ones that she's presented here, so we're not redoing things. But let's pick one in each of those topics, and then use the other ones still as part of our evaluation process. But is not, you know, is, is more the, sort of, like, you know, we still have to do financial, we still have to do whatever. And so we'll still use this, and we're not reinventing the wheel, but we'll select, you know, one from each of those three or four categories. And just sort of see what we can consolidate. Does that sound like a reasonable solution?
One thing I thought is, at that class, or that seminar, or whatever it is you attended, did they give an example of somebody's evaluation tool? Like some other district in Massachusetts that we could look at?
I think they did, but I'm not, I have the, I have the document here.
I got the document somewhere. They did give us an example, but they cautioned us that it's a function built on a human, on humans. And humans are often fallible, not infallible, fallible. Everything breaks down under the best of circumstances. What happened, what was good yesterday may not be very good today. And that's what they, am I right, Sue?
Yeah, but, but you know what? There's a whole list of standards here. Again, I think it's confusing, SMART goals versus standards. Standards are the job of the superintendent across the state. Goals are specific to our district. What goals do we want you to achieve for us? So having said that, I'll share this with everybody and go through the rubrics, because you will see how we evaluate your standards. And then how we evaluate the SMART goals. Again, the SMART goals are pretty specific, you know, how are they going, what's, they're outcome-based for the district.
So that's what the student learning and, one and two, so those are SMART goals.
Right, student learning, yeah, that one too, yeah, you, you have a target in there, you have an outcome.
Yes, yeah.
You're saying, right, that's right.
Those are what SMART goals are about. That's what they look like. They're writing them for thirty something years.
That's right.
Yep.
And then there's, I would get a hold on this today?
So let's let her probably finish, and then we can make a decision.
So the template that we use to set this up is from the new MASC. I have to report out on the standards of a superintendent, my four standards, plus COVID. I also have SMART goals in there, and the most important part of that is around student learn. That has to be typed, and they're actually moving it to a smarter goal. So those are measurable, those are timely, those are things that you can put. So those are measurable, those are timely, those are things that you can put your hand on. Our district improvement is, once again, about cultural responsibility and resiliency. So, these are in one document for two purposes, if you wanna separate it, whatever you wanna do. But there are SMART goals in here, there are professional practice goals in here, and actually, they're above and beyond what the recommendation is. So I have used the MASC format and have combined it to make it original to Lomester.
Susan, would, would it help, remember in the past, this is a while, we had common goals? School committee had set up like a little Saturday afternoon session, and we came up with some goals. Combined goals between the superintendent. I mean, I think this is a whole lot, you know, I think it's a whole lot of work here, and some of it is just.
Yeah, we're busy.
What you're supposed to do, right? I mean, that's your job to do.
Yeah, I have to.
And what Susan's saying is, those, those are the other things that I asked you about. If you were to accomplish one thing this year, that's like, this is every day, this is what I'm focused on.
It's my student learning goals.
It's the student learning goals.
And we should know that, and we should be pushing in that direction, right?
Correct.
The, 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 you know, leadership team, principals.
That's what they presented this evening.
Should be doing the same thing, but I'm just saying, those are the three or four things I think Susan's talking about, that you want the whole system to be pushing, right? We all know, they're written up on the wall, you know, give respect, get it, whatever it is. That I think is what we did before, to try to focus on it. And then, I think we ended up with this tool because we didn't have such a great goal-setting experience with a particular superintendent, so we went to this, this is how we got to this. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I mean.
District improvement goal is, is necessary, and the two student learning goals are necessary. Those are the ones that we're already measuring, and that's what our teachers are using in their evaluation process. These have been vetted through across the district, they've been communicated to every level, every union, and goal-setting for our staff is happening permanently based on these goals.
So if we start and talk to a teacher, the teacher knows that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Brandon?
It, it sounds to me like the, the extent of this document is what's confusing because there's a mix of the goals that are outlined and the standards. I am fine, completely fine with separating them, I think we still need them because that's how we evaluate superintendent.
We can probably something else.
Yeah, yeah.
My biggest concern is I think we need to vote on this now because we need to have a mid-year evaluation on these exact goals in a couple of months. And if we push it off, so I'm gonna make a motion that we separate these two documents and approve the goals as they're raised.
Second.
Wait, what goals? So the goals would be the district improvement goal and the student learning, two student learning goals.
The goals is what she just said. The student learning goals and the district goals. The professional practice goals are standards.
Alright, so.
So, she just said the district improvement goals and the two student learning goals are SMART goals. And the rest will be standards.
The rest will be, yeah, definitely.
Would be standards.
Standard is asterisk.
Well, those, she should have a professional practice goal.
Follow through behind it.
So we can keep it. So keep number one.
The COVID goal.
Well, why would we keep, number one's the COVID goal, you want that to be the professional practice goal?
That has to be the driver.
There needs to be a professional practice.
Yes, but I'm saying as opposed to two.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind, I think that's important because one of the pieces of feedback that you gave me was about increasing family engagement and communication, so I think that that would suit its purpose.
So the number one.
Sure.
As opposed to two.
That's the driver of this whole thing. Everything off the super flow, leadership.
So we're doing professional practice goal one, district improvement goal, and the two student learning goals.
Yes.
As everyone, so that is what the motion is to approve those goals.
Yeah, the second.
And we have a first and a second, any other discussions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So for the professional practice goal one, I, I mean, I'm not sure that I would call those benchmarks benchmarks, but I think they're also the kind of thing that's obvious when these, it'll be obvious to us that we see it. I think for the student learning goals, it's also like you laid out percents and tests, like that's really clear. For the district improvement goal, I see, maybe it's just me, but as I read the benchmarks, I see goals and not things that are measurable. Or, I mean, these aren't measures themselves. So I'm wondering how, I mean, obviously I want you to do these things. I'm wondering how we're going to measure that you, that we accomplish these specific things, see what I'm saying?
Yes, by the evidence that we provide.
And these are of course tough.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because that's about mindset and building culture.
So you have, you have things in mind, you'll be able to show us, to show that these have happened?
Yes.
I'm satisfied with that.
Very, Ron, do you?
The only other thing I'm gonna add is, to add on to Michael, and he being the dirt, you have to add an addendum, all of this is a requirement by DESI. Paula said it, Paula told us that.
Right, I don't think, I bet I don't know if that needs to be added.
Well, you don't want the devil in the details.
That's why we're doing it.
It's far better, if it's not there, it's not there. If it's written in black and white, aha, it's there.
So, Ron, what we're gonna do is we're gonna vote on the goals right now, and then we'll entertain a motion maybe to vote on the standards so that we all know that the rest of the things are standards, and that will accomplish that. Alright, so we have a motion, a second, can, all those in favor?
We gotta have discussion, you not done the discussion?
I thought everybody was done, do you have anything else?
So, I just wanna make sure we get a copy of, between you and Ron, that we get, because I'd really like to see another way that they've done this. You know, we talked about it, took the seminar on it, but I'd actually like to see another superintendent who we are, they're actually doing it, so that between now and the new year.
Yeah, we can still have a subgroup meet, but we need to vote on these now because we'll be.
So, one of you will take care of that, or both of you?
I will, tomorrow morning I'll, I'll be burning the towel.
Alright, okay, that's all I have.
And so then can I have a second motion around the standards? Just so it's really clear that these are the standards that we're agreeing to.
So, yeah.
So make a motion that we accept professional goals two through five as standards for evaluation.
Any discussion on that?
As long as we write down that it's directed, dictated by the, that DESI says it's a requirement. I'm asking, I'm not, I'm asking, what if I'm black and white? So no one says we're trying to get this out of, out of thin air, that's all I'm asking. I don't want anyone to come back and tell us, oh, you didn't say anything about DESI. Paula keeps telling us, DESI, it's a DESI requirement, yes or no?
You have to evaluate, you have to evaluate.
I don't think it needs to be written.
It just needs to be evaluated.
You know what?
To be evaluated.
If it's not written, it's not there.
Well, it is there.
It is there.
It's accepted, right.
Okay, alright, but I'm telling you.
And these standards are written.
The standards are written, do we have any other discussion? Alright, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Alright, thank you.
Paula? I would just like to make one comment. I appreciate your comment about the lateness of this. I have been pushing to withstand the agenda.
I know, you brought this up to have it on the agenda last meeting.
And that's why it's our responsibility as a school committee, not only for the superintendent to prepare her goals, it's our responsibility to approve them and work with her to agree on them, so.
It's been two months since we first spoke about it, yes.
I absolutely, and I've been pushing for this, believe me, so I just wanna, I did appreciate your comment because I was kinda pushed aside on this, and, thank you.
Yep.
So for a subcommittee to go move past these goals, but to talk about the future, if people can let me know who wants to be on it?
I would like to be on it.
Yeah, but maybe if we just get a copy of what they should, maybe this is a five-minute conversation.
Yeah. Well, I think though Dean is also part of the evaluation process.
Okay, I don't have a problem.
That should be part of it as well, because these, these goals go into a whole evaluation process as well. And technically, this should be part of the evaluation, not what we've been using.
Alright, so I have two people, anybody else interested, Peter and Melissa?
Okay.
We're gonna move on to approval of the minutes for the October fourth minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any omissions, corrections, errors?
I think the only question I had was maybe just on the wording on under two C, under the NCAST delegate resolutions. Reading this, I wouldn't know what that meant necessarily, although if you violate the laws and assault, maybe that's kinda big.
Well, we had.
Any violation of the laws, non-assault. I'm sorry.
It's in regard to the, of the minutes.
It's.
Two C, number five. It was the policy.
Zero tolerance policy.
Yeah, I know we agree, the vote itself was correct, I'm just thinking maybe the wording needs to be changed a little bit.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because if you violate the law, you nece, you didn't necessarily assault someone, but violate the law in a different way.
Right.
Okay. Maybe although if you assault someone, maybe that's not considered, maybe that's something that we discuss. I don't know. We discussed it ad nauseam of how an assault may be considered a zero tolerance policy, although not listed specifically under two C.
Alright, so we'll talk to Chris about just a reword. Alright, all those in favor? Yep, opposed, motion carries, we're gonna do finance subcommittee report.
Finance subcommittee, Matt and Yanni tonight, we have a couple of items for the full school committee, would you like me to do those now?
Yes, please.
Are these in addition to?
Yes, so last time we, at the last meeting, I brought, told, brought up that finance has reviewed a couple of things to bring to us, so the first is two transfer requests. Yes, so transfer request number one is laid out on, it's near the end of the packet, page that looks like this, is a table that describes it. So we would be transferring one point two million dollars from the general fund salaries to general fund expenses. As I think we're all aware, the appropriation we got in, from the city council budget passed at the end of June was out of balance, it was more money than we asked for in salaries, wages and salaries, and less money than we asked for in expenses. And so this transfer is a rebalancing transfer. It's not exactly the difference because it has been adjusted to take into account what we've learned since then, now that we know what the actual chapter seventy is and what the actual enrollment is. But this is just a rebalancing. So finances looked at this, and if you, the second table is some details about which line items that extra money was sitting in and where it, where it will go into, that's the detail. And we provided the, the next page is the munis report showing that there's plenty of money in the line item we're taking out of to take this out of, just in case anybody wants that backup documentation. So finances reviewed this and believes this makes sense. It was approved by finance unanimously, so I will make a motion that we approve this transfer of one point two million dollars from general fund salaries to general fund expenses.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
So, I just wanted to make sure from the superintendent, we have, tonight it was mentioned we have positions that are open. They're open, they're funded, they're just unable to find anybody to take them.
We haven't been able to fill.
So, are we okay on the salary part of the budget for this year? Because my thinking when I put this together was, in our conversations with DOR and some of the high-level administrators was, a lot of school departments were making sure they have the salary part and then using their rescue money or their CARES Act money on the expense side, because a lot of them are one-time expenses. So, what you're saying is, you're comfortable with the ratios that you put in there and, okay.
And in particular, there is actually two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that was extra in salaries line that we're keeping there because they have identified some additional needs, and so.
Around nurses and seniors.
And I'm fine with that, I just.
Yeah, we've kept an eye on it.
Alright, anybody else for a discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then we have a, oh, this one doesn't actually require a full school committee vote, but I will just tell you what we've done. Transfer request number two was moving some money from ninety-three hundred tuitions to non-public schools into fifty-two fifty insurance for retired employees. That's all within expenses. It was a large amount and changed the thousand level of DESI code, so the finance committee was required to approve that, which we've done. Because it stays in expenses, it doesn't require a full school committee vote, but just letting you know that that has happened. The second thing is, we have a piece of business before us, which is the official school committee revised budget for fiscal twenty-two. As you know, our, last year we passed what's effectively our budget request. We now know the actual appropriation from the city, including the actual chapter seventies, those are things that were done afterwards. We have the updated information on enrollment and needs. So the school department has come to us with this revised budget, which changes a few lines, changes them so that the totals match the appropriation. The totals on these two, on these two and a half pages of budget are correct, including the transfers that we just discussed. So these balance out to what's gonna actually be in the two sides of the general fund. So you can see there's two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars left in classroom teachers of the extra, like I say, it was not all transferred over, that's the only thing that's happening on the salary side. On the expenses side, the main adjustments, which you can see are in the middle column, we are offsetting some of insurance for active employees, the plan is to use some of the FY twenty-one school choice that we rolled over. And for tuition to non-public schools, we had already planned, the number there that's the budget, the original budget, already planned for the circuit breaker money from last year that we rolled over. Because we didn't get as much on expenses as we had asked for, we will need, the plan here is approximately one point five million of this year's circuit breaker to cover that as well. Those are the main adjustments. So you can see this is pretty, very close to what we voted originally. It's just some adjustments to take into account the actual bottom line that we have to match and what the school department says they are comfortable with, what our actual numbers will be and how to pay for it. And of course, lastly, we have a revolving fund report, so you can see the school choice money is actually there and the circuit breaker money is actually there to do what's proposed. So again, finances reviewed this revised budget, we've been working on this for a while. We have, we voted as finance unanimously to recommend this, so I make a motion that we approve the FY twenty-two budget report in the packet as the final revised school committee budget for FY twenty-two.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Peter?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for it. But I, I do just wanna point out so that everyone outside of finance is aware, right, we're with the fiscal twenty-two, chapter, not chapter, sorry, circuit breaker, that we're tapping into what we're receiving this year. Last year, you know, it was unfortunate the circumstances that allowed us to build the, you know, to carry over school choice and circuit breaker, but we're already starting to eat into what we're receiving this year. Now, the year's not over, so, right, things can change. But just so everyone's aware that, you know, those, where, if this stands, we're not gonna carry over circuit breaker in full like we did this, this past year. So I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware of that.
Anybody else?
I was gonna say, the, the purpose of the American Rescue Plan is to offset, they realize that we ran into this situation. That's the purpose of the funding, is to use it to supplement us. And that's why they made it good until twenty twenty-four, they want to see you use it all at once. But along the way, you make these adjustments because people have lost reverence, that, you know, they understand that's the whole purpose of using that money, is to catch the system up wherever we have to, whatever we have to do, and they gave discretion on CARES Act money and the American Rescue Plan to be able to do that. There's nothing in our budget that we're using any of that, those funds, right? I mean, it's, you haven't used, in the total budget that you see, that's the general fund budget.
Just general fund.
But then we're gonna have another budget, which is gonna offset, so if we don't have to use some of these funds because they're one-time and we use it for that, then we don't have to use it, we can use the Rescue Plan to offset that. The point is to catch us up.
Right, yes.
Because we fell behind, that's the whole purpose, they left us some creative ways to do that. So, it's not like, you know, that, those dollars have to be used for that, it's just our option, that's what we decided to do, that's the recommendation. Okay.
Alright, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, anything else?
Yeah, just a last note, the school department and working together with Jen Reddington, the new city comptroller, and I'm sure other people in City Hall, we have completed the end of year report. and I'm sure other people in city hall, we have completed the end of year report. It was submitted on October 15th. Technically, the deadline's October 1st, but we applied for a two-week extension, which is automatic. We got that, and hence turned in on time, so it's completed. The city side is done, the school side is done. It's the first time I've been able to say that in October since I'm down the school committee. So this was a tremendous improvement. I do, I want to give kudos to our new comptroller for making this a much smoother process and on time for change. So, that's it, it's good news.
Yep.
We hired an assistant budget director, who's really helped me. I mean, the two of them together are just, Jim Pemere doing outstanding things, so they, they, you know, we've got, we'll catch up to do in a couple of other areas, but, you know, we had some illness and whatever, but we're, we're getting it.
No, that's great. Um, I think on finance, like we mentioned, we, we started talking about athletics. Couple of things, we still have outstanding, a Title IX lawsuit confirmed by the superintendent. We have not had an audit of athletics in a couple of years. I think Melanie said we should have it every three years, and I think it's beyond that. So I believe we're going to start that. But the other thing was, Eileen, you were, you were the athletic advisory representative, and we haven't seen any minutes from your meeting, which I know that was an issue a couple of years ago. We should be getting advisory minutes.
So, we really didn't have meetings last year because of everything. We did just have one recently.
Right, so.
So we can, I can do a report, I haven't seen any, I don't, I haven't seen any minutes from that myself.
Okay, so, just as a.
I can certainly.
Just as a sidebar, I, and this is kind of concerning, and that's why I think it's, it's important to be part of this advisory thing. So the budget for last year for athletics was supplemented by 128,000 dollars in the revolving athletic account, which is not in the budget for '22, '21, '22. So, you know, that's an important piece, I mean.
Yeah, we have the ESER funds, but again. We're using, I know they're using the ESER funds, and I know the athletic director was a little nervous about it, instead of the fees, and to replace that, and that is supposed to make up for the extra.
Well, this is, for clarification, this is last year's expenses paid this year, 127,000, so that's not even the fees, that's not including any fees that we're waiving this year. That's an expense, right, Paula? No, Melanie, you want to come up?
No, that's, it's, it's an encumbrance, so it's being carried forward, still last year's money.
Right.
But it's being paid in this '22. It's just reflective, that's why we keep it in the tax home.
It's still last year's money, it's not this year's money.
It's still last year's money.
Okay, well, the presentation says you have.
Fiscal '21.
21 ending cash, and then it says 21 expenses paid in '22.
Correct.
Right.
With 21 money.
With 21 money.
21 money.
21 money paid in '22.
Okay, that's not what that says. Okay.
I think it is, it is the case that we, that it is an expense we have to pay now. And some of it was paid out of the revolving fund last year, and some of it will be paid out of ESERS this year. Eventually, ESER will go away, and so we'll have to know how we cover that when that time comes. It's not, we do have to keep our eye on that expense, it will have to be budgeted one way or another.
I think that's the important piece, you know, right now, we're, you know, we're on a honeymoon with fees and things like that. You know, at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Right, it's not going to continue, and what is the real cost, or what are we really paying for ESER, with the ESER funds supplementing the budget or the revolving, that we need to put back on our books, so. All right, so we'll put down the athletic repository on the next agenda.
I've got it ready.
Perfect. We're going to move on to the policy subcommittee. Ron?
We've got a meeting this afternoon, and we reviewed the student representative on the school committee. And we voted on it, we're passing it, and we're having the first reading tonight.
So would you like to make a motion, or Brandon?
You want, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the student representative to the Leominster School Committee policy that is outlined in the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, so we'll vote on it, and then it'll be on our agenda for next meeting. All those in favor? Yeah, and that passes. So with the action items, we've actually done all of them. We have new and old business, I have something, but there's other people, Dean?
I was just curious, we used to rent the auditorium on the weekend, on Sundays to the Exalt Church. So, do we rent it to them anymore?
Right now, we're on hold, we don't have, we don't have any custodians to help on the weekends, and we're really short-staffed.
So it's not because of COVID or anything, it's just we don't have people.
We just can't manage it.
COVID has contributed to the loss of custodians.
Right, no, no, I didn't mean that, I meant just.
Because of the regulations.
I just want to make sure we continue to rent it, because we put a whole lot of money into that so that we could, I mean, we put air conditioning, new seats, everything.
Lighting as well, so it's, it's a very good partnership, and they're very good to us, it's just right now, we cannot manage it.
But through other groups too, the whole business model was that we were going to, we lost a lot of people at Monkey Tech and Fitchburg High, because we didn't have air conditioning, they have Dancery Center over the middle of June, half the people be passed out, for lighting, the seats are, you know, so. We invested the taxpayers, and hopefully to have more people, the overall goal was to have people use it.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, so it wasn't because of COVID or anything. I see them at Knights of Columbus now.
I know, but they, they're the second where, healthy, they will be back.
Yeah, okay.
But you know, we're keeping an eye on that for us.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Melissa?
So we're hearing all the great things that are happening. I am kind of concerned, as I've heard from families, it's nothing that's unexpected, but about some of the behavior, social, emotional needs that are happening at a couple of the schools. We're seeing it states, across the state, we're seeing it across the country. I just would like to get a check-in, maybe for the next meeting, on where we're at, maybe for interventions, or, you know, if there's an additional need for services for the mental health, social piece, I'm sure there is guidance, you know, and get a check-in on where we're at.
I agree. Any else?
So I just had one thing that we need to re-clarify with Chris. We, for the people attending the MASC conference.
So you're on hold.
It was brought to my attention that we were on hold, I did not realize that. Because I know many of us had said, like, by the end of last school year, that we were going, so I'm a little concerned that that wasn't registered, I guess.
Well, they didn't know they were going to do an in-person, and then they said, we're going to do in-person, then they limited in-person. So now it's getting even more and more limited based on numbers, so they're, we're waiting to see if they're going to open it up. So we can always do a virtual, like Bronny's doing.
I'm doing virtual, I knew.
Right, so it's.
I knew it was going to happen.
They're waiting to see the effects, because a lot of our meetings are still virtual. So, Chris has been on hold for over a month now, since they made the decision to let us know. So we'll get back to you.
Yeah, we need to know, because like.
Yeah, you have to make plans.
Right, I have to make plans, I took time out from work, do I really take time off of work for that whole thing?
Yeah.
Did you pay them for a hotel room?
No, no, they wouldn't let us. They wouldn't let us.
So I just, I want to follow up, because it's really in two weeks.
Yep.
So it'd be nice to know, what's going on.
11 days, quarter one is done, it's kind of.
I can't imagine that they're going to be able to put it together, an in-person session in two weeks.
Right, so.
Well, no, it's put together, right?
It's put together, they just keep.
Who's can go.
Yeah, how many can get in the rooms, and it's.
One space, so they have to ask for more.
And even the vendors don't want to go this year.
They're missing an opportunity.
I know. So we'll call again tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, just.
She's going to call.
They're not having to defend with the supply chain.
Well, exactly.
Excuse me, all right, anything else?
Something next year.
From anybody? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Awesome.
We'll get all our votes.
Second?
Yes. Okay, great. Have a great night, everybody.